Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:05 PM on Monday, May 24, 2021. This virtual public hearing is now considered to be open. My name is Karen Kurek, and I am an environmental engineer two for the North Carolina Division of Air Quality's Mooresville Regional Office. And I have been appointed to be the hearing officer for this virtual public hearing by the Director of the Division of Air Quality, Mike Aberzynski. My purpose this evening is to receive in an orderly manner your oral comments for consideration in the issuance of an air quality permit to Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC for a first-time Title V air permit. This facility currently holds air permit number 10203R07 with an expiration date of February 28, 2025 for a wood pellets manufacturing plant at 309 Enviva Boulevard, Gary'sburg, North Carolina. The Title V permit does not include any significant operational changes at the wood pellet facility, and the potential to admit remains the same as under the current permit. The focus of this public hearing, and the only focus, is to receive public comments on the proposed air permit for Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC as they relate to the applicability of air quality regulations. The Division of Air Quality is conducting this public hearing digitally to allow for public participation while protecting public health under current guidance to prevent the spread of COVID-19. This public hearing announcement was published in the Roanoke-Chilliway News Herald and on DAQ's website on Saturday, April 24, 2021. The Division of Air Quality regulations for the issuance of a Title V permit does require a hearing or comment period for the issuance of this permit. The required 30-day public notice for this virtual public hearing was published, as previously stated, on April 24, 2021, in the Roanoke-Chilliway News Herald and on the DAQ's website. The comment period for this permit opened on April 24, 2021, and will close on May 26, 2021. The required duration for a comment period is 30 days per our 15A NCAC 2Q 300 rules. The comment for this permit will have been a total of 32 days. In addition to your oral comments tonight, the Division is also accepting comments via mail, electronic mail, and by phone to a voicemail box. The email address is DAQpubliccomments@ncdnr.gov. The phone number with a voicemail box is 919-707-8714. During this virtual public hearing tonight, we will be receiving oral comments from those individuals who pre-register to speak at this event. If you are having technical difficulties with WebEx, you can use the chat feature in WebEx to ask questions or seek assistance. You can also visit the Division of Air Quality's website using the link in the public notice for this hearing for instructions on various ways to connect to WebEx. Joining me for this hearing tonight by WebEx are, from DAQ's Raleigh Central Office, Michael Pajetra, Deputy Director for the Division of Air Quality, Richard Simpson, Permitting Section Engineer for the Division of Air Quality, Zainab Nasif, Division of Air Quality's Public Information Officer, Rahat Ashik, Environmental Engineer II with the Rules Development Branch, and from DAQ's Raleigh Regional Office, we have Taylor Hartzfield, Regional Supervisor, Will Wyke, Compliance Supervisor, Dana Pittman, Permitting Coordinator, and Dawn Reddicks, Environmental Engineer II and Inspector for Enviva North Hampton. Now I would like to take the opportunity to recognize any local dignitaries such as town mayors, city or county officials, or state-elected legislators that are present. Thank you for your time and your commitment to this public hearing. I also want to thank everyone involved in getting this public hearing scheduled and organized, with special thanks to Rahat Ashik and Zainab Nasif for their technical expertise in setting up this event. Copies of the permit application and the air permit application review, the draft air permit, and other information concerning the Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC application are available to the public at the following locations. The Division of Air Quality Raleigh Regional Office located at 3800 Barrett Drive, Suite 101, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27609 with phone number 919-791-8240, or the Division of Air Quality Central Office Permit Section located at 217 West Jones Street in Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603 with phone number 919-707-8738. If you haven't done so and wish to receive these materials in person, they are available to you during normal business hours at the locations I just mentioned. However, due to COVID-19, an appointment is required. Please call in advance to make an appointment. A copy of the draft air permit and the permit application review are also available on the Division of Air Quality's website at www.ncair.org. The order of events for this hearing are as follows. First, Mr. Richard Simpson of DAQ's Central Permitting Office, who reviewed the permit application and wrote the draft permit, will discuss the application DAQ received from Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC for the air permit and the air permitting procedures. This will be followed by the public comment period. We will receive oral comments from those individuals who pre-register to speak at this event. This will allow us to have an accurate hearing record. Only those who have pre-registered will be called on to speak. To provide enough time for public comments, this meeting will be conducted in the following manner. All efforts will be made to call speakers in the same order of your registrations. Oral statements will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. I will call the names of each of the pre-registered speakers in order, and our WebEx host will unmute the speaker when it is their turn to speak. I will also announce the name of the next speaker in the queue so they can prepare to provide their comments when their names are called to speak. Please do not start speaking until the WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. Your time will begin when the WebEx host has unmuted your microphone. I will monitor your time and will announce when your three minutes has expired. Please respect the time of those of all who wish to present oral comments tonight by adhering to the time limits and closing your remarks as quickly as possible once your time is up. Cross-examination of the person presenting comments will not be allowed. However, as the hearing officer, I may ask questions to the presenter for clarification. Questions directed to Division of Air Quality staff members will not be answered during this hearing. If you have any questions for DAQ staff, we can provide you with contact information so you may contact them after the meeting during normal business hours. After receiving comments this evening, the hearing record will be closed. However, the period for submitting comments does not close until May 26, 2021, at 5:00 PM. You have until May 26, at 5:00 PM, to submit additional written comments. Again, the only focus of this hearing is the presentation of oral comments related to air quality issues associated with issuing an air quality permit to Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC and the applicability of air quality regulations. Only relevant air quality comments can be considered in my final recommendation to our Division Director. I will now call on Mr. Richard Simpson of DAQ's Central Permitting Office to discuss the air permitting procedures and permit application review.
Thank you, Karen, panelists, and attendees. Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC currently holds air permit number 10203R07 issued on October 21, 2020 with an expiration date of February 28, 2025 for a wood pellets manufacturing plant in Gary'sburg, North Hampton County, North Carolina. The plant began operation on April 23, 2013. Plant operations consist of debalkers, wood chippers, wood hammer mills, dryers, screners, pellet presses, coolers, and product handling activities. The facility is currently classified as a major source under both the Title V and provision of significant deterioration programs. This facility will become a minor source for PSD after all controls are constructed and become operational. The next slide, please. The November 23, 2020 submittal of this application is for a first-time Title V air permit. The submittal of an amended Title V application was required by permit within 30 days of 10203R07 issuance. The original Title V first-time application was submitted on April 22, 2014, within 12 months of commencing operation of the facility, and was amended on August 9, 2016, January 21, April 3, and November 23 of 2020. A previous draft first-time Title V permit went through public news from September 20, 2017 through October 20, 2017. Comments were received during the public comment period from the public and from Environmental Integrity Project. Processing of that application was placed on hold pending response to those comments. The November 23, 2020 amended application replaced all of the previous Title V first-time applications. This procedural application requires both a 30-day public notice period and a 45-day EPA review. Next slide, please. The plant is currently permitted to produce up to 625,225 oven dry tons per year of wood pellets utilizing up to 30% softwood on a 12-month rolling basis. After meeting all construction requirements and demonstrating initial compliance with all applicable regulations per the construction schedule, the facility is permitted to increase potential throughput to 781,255 oven dry tons per year and increase softwood percentages to 80%. There are no changes to the current permit throughput and percent softwood limits or restrictions in this first-time Title V draft permit. Next slide, please. The file summarizes the changes made to the permit as part of this procedural permit modification. The format in the permit using current Title V permit structure included the addition of non-compliant statements throughout addition of the current set of general conditions. Also included are the deletion of the drive one and two bypass modes since they are used only for malfunctions. Also deleted of the drive hammer mill prescreener since the systems are totally enclosed. There was a correction to one of the thermal oxidizers, number two VOC emission factor from 0.77 to 0.0722 pounds per oven dry tonne. And we also modify the required submittal of stack test reports from 60 days down to 30 days. All proposed changes to the permit are addressed in the first-time Title V draft permit application review and the draft permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. At this time, we will hear from those who pre-register to provide oral comments this evening. When your name is called, our WebEx host will unmute your microphone so you may provide your comments. To ensure your records are complete, please clearly state your name and who you are representing. Your comments will be recorded, so please speak loudly and clearly towards your computer's microphone or your telephone speaker. Please do not start speaking until the WebEx host has indicated that your microphone has been unmuted. If you're using a telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand so the WebEx host can identify your line to be unmuted. This is critically important for the clarity of your comments. Please turn down any speakers that you have that could create a feedback. If there is significant feedback on your line, we may need to mute your call and attempt to come back to you later. If we call your name but cannot hear you after you have been unmuted, please check to see if you are muted on WebEx screen on your computer. If you are having audio issues, try a different method of audio connection within WebEx, or use the "call me" feature to have WebEx call your personal telephone. If we still cannot hear you, we will proceed to the next registered speaker, but we'll call your name again at the end of the hearing. I'll do my best to pronounce your names correctly, and do apologize in advance for any errors. As I call on speakers, I will also announce the next speaker so they can be prepared to speak next. We will now begin taking oral comments. Our first speaker will be Sheil Patel, followed by David Anderson.
Sheil Patel, your line has been unmuted. Go ahead and please make your comments now. Sheil, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments now. Okay? We will come back to Sheil.
Okay, then the next speaker will be David Anderson, followed by Belinda Joyner.
Mr. Anderson, if you've dialed in by phone, please press *3 so I can identify your line, please. Mr. Anderson, if you've dialed in by phone, please press *3 so I can identify your line so I can unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move to the next person.
Okay, next speaker we have will be Belinda Joyner, followed by Jessica Marcus.
Belinda, you're... Yes, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Okay, in North Hampton County, Enviva used a DEQ loophole, the ability to file minor source permits and change emission requirements in the future without needing to refile to bypass the need of community public hearing. The communities experience lots of issues with dust and fallout, but the permit does not have sufficient protection for fugitive dust. It needs to have specific measures related to the facility such as enclosure, wind breaks, watering roads, covering piles, and other measures designed to reduce fugitive emissions. Also needs to have a daily monitoring for fugitive emissions, and when emissions are observed, steps to eliminate the emissions. Particular matters, especially five particular matters which Enviva emits, has been shown to aggravate Corona symptoms or COVID symptoms and lead to worse outcomes. DEQ needs to monitor these facilities. You give them the permits, you have nobody to come out and monitor. The community is suffering from this. It is a disservice, and if you're going to give them permit, make sure that they're providing what they're supposed to provide in order for those people that live and breathe it every day can continue to live and breathe without COVID, without asthma, without COPD and all the other ailments that come. You all have these public hearings, you hear the input, but we still get the same results. And again, like I say, it's a disservice to us. So if you're going to give a permit, make sure that they're providing by what they're supposed to be doing and not what they want to do and using loopholes to get by, and you all allowing them to do this. So if you're going to give them or renew the Title V permit, make sure everything is in place that's supposed to be in place before it's done. And I'm sure not only myself, but the other residents in North Hampton County would appreciate this that live right in the backyard or the front yard of Enviva plant. Those are my comments. Please take them into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Joyner. Our next speaker will be Jessica Marcus, followed by Richie Harding.
Jessica, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am speaking in favor of approving Enviva's North Hampton permit. Again, my name is Jessica Marcus. I'm the Vice President of Policy for the U.S. Industrial Pellet Association. UCIP is a nonprofit trade association based in Richmond, Virginia, that promotes sustainability and safety practices within the U.S. wood energy industry. Our membership includes large-scale producers of sustainable wood biomass across the southeastern U.S., and Enviva is one of our founding members. As you consider Enviva's permit application, I would like to emphasize that leading scientific authorities and real-world data confirm the positive benefits of wood biomass for the climate, for our environment, and for rural economies like the North Hampton community. According to the world's foremost climate experts, wood bioenergy limits global warming by replacing fossil fuels and keeping our forests intact. This is the conclusion of the U.N. Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which is widely considered to be the global authority on climate science. The IPCC makes clear that forests and forest products have an essential role to play in mitigating climate change. In its August 2019 Special Report on Land and Climate, the IPCC indicated that bioenergy and sustainable forestry are critical components in keeping the Earth's warming below 1.5C. Specifically, the IPCC stated that sustainable forest management, which is aimed at storing carbon while also yielding timber, fiber, and bioenergy, will produce the best results for the climate. Wood biomass also benefits the environment by strengthening the market for forestry. It provides additional income for landowners to help them keep planting trees versus converting their land to other uses. It is because of these strong markets for forests that data shows that forest inventory and forested area in the U.S. Southeast have steadily increased since the mid-1950s and that forest carbon stocks have more than doubled during that same time period. Wood biomass is a meaningful but small part of the overall forest economy. It accounts for only 3% of all wood harvested each year across the U.S. Southeast. Therefore, it's easy to see why our forests remain stable, productive, and healthy even as they provide a steady supply of renewable products like biomass. And finally, biomass provides a vital source of economic support for communities like North Hampton. Enviva has already invested more than $190 million in their North Hampton facility, and the plant currently supports around 100 direct jobs as well as over 300 additional indirect jobs throughout the region. And these are well-paying jobs. The average wage at the plant is 40% higher than the county average. Enviva estimates it creates a total annual economic impact in the region of approximately $275 million per year. The science and the facts show us that an approved permit at the North Hampton facility will allow Enviva to continue displacing coal, growing more trees, fighting climate change, and providing jobs and economic investment for the local community. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. The next speaker we have is Richie Harding, followed by Kathy Clayborne.
Richie, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Yes. Let's kind of set this stage here. We have heavy industrial facilities located in the light industrial zones, which has a community surrounding us. A light industrial facility would have no dust leaving the facility, but this facility is causing an extreme amount of dust. We have taxpayers who have worked hard, long and bothered to provide for their family to provide a place where they can live, and they have a community ring that's coming to their homes and to their cars. They can't even foot our side. They have things like their tenants. It's really horrible for these things to happen. We went to the county commission, we had a meeting where we counted the issues, our county manager, to discuss the issues out there. There was an agreement, a agreement between us, reaching a figure, but it's not being met, but now we have to ask.
Mr. Harding, could you turn down your speakers? You're getting some feedback. Thank you.
They have been talking. So, okay, I got you. Yes, Enviva has become that bigger, that bigger entity. And this really causes problems when you have so many people that is, that's, their homes are encamped with this, this huge facility, which they are planning to grow even larger. If we have an issue such as this, and we live in that area, a very rural area, where our healthcare is not very least the case. So we have people that are already born with long issues like I have. We have a lot of people with COPD, a lot of people that suffer from a lot of different things, from cancer and other issues. And now we're going to add something else to make this even more difficult for them to be able to live, to even be able to enjoy life. I asked you tonight to not just... Don't get exactly what's going on, but I need you to take some steps to ensure that there are some procedures put in place to ensure that this dust is collected properly. I need you to ensure that steps are taken with this permitting process, and it's put in writing to ensure that Enviva takes steps, every step that they're able, that they're able to take, to ensure that the dust, that it comes from that facility as controlled as best as possible, to ensure that each and every one that is in our communities are able to live and enjoy life and not have it cut short for monetary gain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. Our next speaker will be Kathy Clayborne, followed by Kay Raybold.
Kathy, if you've dialed in by phone, please press *3 so I can't, I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Kathy, if you've dialed in by phone, please press *3 so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on to the next person.
Okay, our next speaker is Kay Raybold, followed by Catherine Isle Joyner.
Okay, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name's Kay Raybold. I live in Raleigh. I'm a member of the Alliance to Protect the People and Places We Live, otherwise known as Apple. I'm here today to ask the DEQ to require Enviva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to mitigate the impact that harmful dust is having on the surrounding community and incorporate that plan into Enviva's Title V permit. Dust from the Enviva facility is a terrible health issue. It's causing enormous suffering to the citizens of North Hampton County. According to the Southern Environmental Law Center, the three leading causes of death in North Hampton County are cancer, lower respiratory disease, and heart disease, all conditions that are aggravated by air pollution. The pollution from the Enviva wood pellet facility, combined with the air and water pollution from factory farms, has contributed to drastic health effects within the community. Wood pellets are destructive. Enviva wood pellet facilities are not only causing harm to the health of North Hampton County residents, they're destroying North Carolina's forests. Our forests are vital to the air we breathe and the water we drink. Forests support the water cycle. We filter, store, and deliver fresh drinking water. In addition, they help to create healthy soils that control water pollution by capturing potential runoff, such as sediments. Our North Carolina forests help to prevent flooding by cutting, and by cutting down forests, Enviva is putting North Carolina's citizens in harm's way. A critical role of forests is that they remove greenhouse gases from the atmosphere and other pollutants. Greenhouse gases raise global temperatures and worsen the effects of climate change. DEQ, we must stop the destruction of forests in North Carolina because of wood pellet production. And with this issue of the climate crisis, the burning and processing of wood pellets are massive sources of greenhouse gases. We need to stop wood pellet production now. There should be no more wood pellet facilities in North Carolina and no expansion of existing facilities. So in closing, please consider the health of North Hampton County residents. I'm asking you to require Enviva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to mitigate, mitigate the impact that harmful dust is having on the surrounding communities. And please incorporate that plan into Enviva's Title V permit. Thank you so much for the opportunity to offer my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Raybold. Our next speaker will be Catherine Isle Joyner, followed by Patrick Suarez.
Catherine, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Isle Joyner, and I'm the President of Isle
Good evening. My name is Catherine Isel Joyner, and I am the President of Isel Trucking. Our company supports the Enviva Northampton Title V permit. Isel Trucking provides the transportation of Enviva's finished wood pellets from the Enviva locations in Sampson and Northampton Counties in North Carolina, as well as the Southampton, Virginia location. We have specifically been servicing the Northampton mill since 2012. From Isel Trucking's experience through partnering with Enviva over the past nine years, Enviva has been an excellent partner, which focuses not only on producing an environmentally friendly biomass product to be used in reducing the world's carbon footprint, but also dedicating itself to being a good neighbor through community involvement. The Northampton Enviva facility has provided direct community impact through not only its 90 employees in Northampton County, but also those in the secondary timber market in Northampton and surrounding counties. The Northampton facility provides 37 jobs at Isel Trucking alone for both professional truck drivers and staff who service the mill. This translates directly into impacting nearly 90 residents of the county. Put in another way, over $2.5 million of our annual payroll related to Enviva Northampton goes directly back into the households of Northampton County residents. This permit will allow Enviva to operate tighter air emission control equipment, in turn, increasing production. More production will lead to more investment in our local economy, which means more job opportunities for the citizens, creating stronger communities. I appreciate Enviva for their support and involvement in Northampton County, and I appreciate your time tonight in taking our comments.
Thank you, Ms. Joyner. Our next speaker will be Patrick Suarez, followed by Crystal Cavalier.
Mr. Patrick Suarez, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Mr. Patrick Suarez, if you've dialed in by telephone, if you would, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Crystal Cavalier, followed by Reverend Kennedy Barber.
Crystal, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Crystal, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we would have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Reverend Kennedy Barber, followed by Robbie Phillips.
Okay, Reverend Barber, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Reverend Barber, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on to the next person.
Okay, our next speaker will be Robbie Phillips, followed by Yana Kratzova.
Robbie, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hello, I'm Robbie. I'm 20 years old. I'm a student and I'm a resident in North Carolina. And I'm speaking today to ask that DEQ requires Enviva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to mitigate the impact that harmful dust pollution is having on the surrounding community. It is imperative that this plan be incorporated into Enviva's Title V permit, should it be approved. In its wood pellet operation, Enviva has logged hundreds of thousands of North Carolinian forests, and its processes have produced millions and millions of tons of CO2 emissions. As the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Crisis, uh, Climate Change, and nearly every climate scientist on Earth has assessed, we have less than nine years to cut global emissions in half to avert the most catastrophic impacts of climate change. Our state's own clean energy plan recognizes that, quote, "The wood pellet industry does not advance North Carolina's clean energy economy," end quote. I spend my entire youth learning more and more about the, learning more and more about and experiencing the dire consequences of our inaction on climate change. Neglecting to further restrict an industry and fuel source that immensely contributes to the climate crisis is to neglect our collective health and well-being at the very least, if not also to actively destroy our futures. Unfettered growth of this industry, especially the Enviva plant in Northampton and the permit under consideration today, are a significant matter of environmental justice as well. The Northampton County community is over 50% black or African-American and has poverty rates well above the national average, as is true of many of the locations throughout our state in which Enviva operates. The dust and other air pollutants released by these facilities trigger and exacerbate respiratory illnesses, lung diseases, heart illnesses, and more. All North Carolinians, especially the residents of Northampton County, deserve better than to be exposed to the toxins and pollutants that spew from this facility without protection. I'm urging DEQ to please require Enviva to develop and implement a dust control plan and incorporate this into their Title V permit if it is approved, and to generally prioritize environmental and climate justice in North Carolina by pushing back on this harmful industry whenever possible. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Um, our next speaker will be Yana Kratzova, followed by Chris Brown.
Yana, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead. Yana, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments, please. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to come back.
Okay, our next speaker will be Chris Brown, followed by Emily Zuccino.
Chris, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Chris Brown, Enviva's Mid-Atlantic Senior Community Relations Manager. I support this permit application since it allows Enviva to continue to operate its newly installed, state-of-the-art air quality control systems. Enviva has been engaged with the Northampton County community since well before the facility was first operational in 2013. Specific to this permit, we have reached out to over 30 local community leaders to educate them on this permit, our plant operations, and answer any questions they may have. We also encourage community participation in this hearing to ensure all voices are heard and all questions are answered. Enviva provides good-paying jobs with excellent benefits. Our employees earn 40% higher wages than the average in the county, which provides a significant economic boost to Northampton County. We employ over 100 people at the Northampton facility. In addition, that's been alluded to earlier, we support over another 300 indirect jobs in roles that support our operations from professional loggers, professional truckers, down to the local hardware store. In my role, I have the honor of working closely with countless nonprofit organizations that are staffed like five like-minded individuals who share the same basic goal of improving the lives of others in the community. Enviva's community focus in Northampton County includes education, first responders, forest sustainability, and serving those who are in need based on input from community leaders. We are all about partnerships. In the past year alone, we provided a grant for mobile Wi-Fi spots in Northampton County school systems. At the community college level, we partnered with Halifax Community College Ramp East Program to help train the next generation of workers. We have also made direct donations to local fire departments, such as an infrared camera that was purchased by the Roanoke Rapids Fire Department last year with the support from Enviva. Enviva is also a founding partner with the Sustainable Forestry Land Retention Project that provides technical assistance and other services for traditionally underserved forest landowners in northeast North Carolina. In terms of general outreach, Enviva continues to cooperate with community leaders who are committed to moving Northampton County forward. We have provided support for mobile food banks, tornado disaster relief, back-to-school programs, most recently a proposed walking trail and playground in Rich Square. This is our community. We work here. We live here. We, and I thank you very much for the opportunity to submit these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Our next speaker will be Emily Zuccino, followed by Lib Hutchby.
Emily, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Zuccino, and I work with Dogwood Alliance. I'm here tonight to ask that DEQ require Enviva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to mitigate the impact that harmful dust is having on the surrounding community and that they incorporate that plan into Enviva's Title V permit. I've been working with local residents in Northampton County for over six years, and in that time, I've consistently heard residents who live near the Enviva plant complain about the dust from the facility. It coats their homes, their cars, ends up inside their homes. The dust is so bad that I've heard several residents describe feeling as if they are prisoners in their own homes, unable to enjoy their front porch, open their windows, or use their outdoor grill. I've heard people say that their asthma and respiratory illnesses have gotten worse. Chances are, this is true. Inhaling fine particulate matter, like the pollution recorded from Enviva's wood pellet facilities, can lead to a variety of health issues. This includes asthma, other respiratory illnesses, headaches, cardiovascular diseases, and cancer. A few years ago, I toured an Enviva facility myself. After just one hour at the facility, I was coated in dust. It was in my eyes, my ears, my nose, and the folds of my clothes. I can't imagine living next to one of these facilities and dealing with this dust on a daily basis. I have attended every single public hearing that DEQ has hosted for Enviva in Northampton County, and at every single hearing, I have heard residents share concerns about the dust. Yet DEQ has done nothing to enforce Enviva to improve this issue. And as usual at these hearings, the only support we hear for the industry is from Enviva employees, industry representatives, or industries that profit, like Isel Trucking. Enviva's donations that we just heard mentioned to the community are merely a drop in the bucket compared to the profits that they make off of this community. They should be investing in making sure that they are protecting the community and have a fugitive dust control plan in place. The Department of Environmental Quality is often the last line of defense that communities have to protect them from polluting industries. Enviva has time and again proven that they will not do the proper thing to protect surrounding communities from pollution unless they are forced to do so. We have seen this a number of times in North Carolina. It is therefore the responsibility of this DEQ to respond to community concerns and require that Enviva develop, develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zuccino. Our next speaker will be Lib Hutchby, followed by Ron Jenkins.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, Lib. Please go ahead and make your comments now. Thank you.
My name is Lib Hutchby. I live in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. I've been to Northampton many times, and I treasure the people who live there. I am not at all sure that Enviva really treasures the people who live there. I've just heard a, a person say that they are interested in partnerships. Well, maybe I would suggest to you that you partner in paying all of the health insurance for people who live within 10 miles of your facility. As was stated earlier, the three major diseases in Northampton County involve lung, heart, and cancer. These are not, this is not funny. I am a cancer survivor myself. I understand what it means for a doctor to sit and have to tell you that you have cancer. I am also, um, what the Ag Department calls a tree farmer. And so it's very disgusting to me to hear, and very, I actually am just so very tired of hearing that biomass is a sustainable piece and that it is helpful. I'm sorry, but trees are much more important than putting wood pellets on ships, like the one that was in Wilmington last week going to the Netherlands. Or, or was it going to Denmark? Excuse me. These wood pellets are going overseas. Where is the money going to come from? We will not eat money seven generations from now. The people in Northampton need fresh air to breathe, so they won't even have seven generations from now. DEQ needs to require Enviva to install air monitoring. All of this dust is, it's really, um, it's ridiculous to think about it. Um, and the previous speaker just explained, it's not just, it's not a one-time thing. If you're a neighbor to Enviva, you can't even have a decent cookout. My, my grandchildren cannot eat money. Your grandchildren cannot eat money. But you do have to breathe, and you do have to have air in order to do that. Oxygen comes from trees. And to cut as many as four times the number of trees in the southeast as in the Amazon, this is, um, it's obscene and moral and otherwise unsustainable. I encourage you, again, as professionals at DEQ, to take the knowledge that you know about water, about trees, and pay attention to the land use in the southeast and understand that in Northampton County, Enviva needs to get slowed down with the ways that they have treated their neighbors right there. Money is not going to do it. You can donate all you want to Enviva.
Ms. Hutchby, your, your time has expired. If you could please just wrap up. Thank you.
There is a book that's just come out entitled Finding the Mother Tree: Discovering the Wisdom of the Forest. I suggest each of you read it, DEQ, and all of you who work at Enviva. The author is Suzanne Simard, S-I-M-A-R-D. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak, to try to save the trees and save the water and protect the generations to come in Northampton and around the world.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchby. Our next speaker will be Ron Jenkins, followed by Dr. Pamela Chamberley.
Ron?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Ron. Yes. Good evening. My name is Ron Jenkins. I serve as the Executive Director of the Virginia Loggers Association. Thank you for the opportunity to share our viewpoints with the North Carolina Department of Air Quality in support of Enviva's Title V permit applications for its facility in Gary'sburg, North Carolina. Allow me to begin with a very strong belief that Enviva is a great company who operates at the highest possible level for environmental standards, social justice, and economic contributions, regardless of any standard used. Enviva has value in every category of standards currently under watchful eyes of public regulators and policymakers. In this air permit application, Enviva goes above all requirements to meet its air quality compliance requirements. Virginia and North Carolina are fortunate to have a high-quality corporation who employs local and gives back to the industry and communities. We should all rest better at night because Enviva uses the natural renewable, carbon-free forest resources in its process. Enviva biomass is an important industry in the U.S. markets that provides jobs, pays taxes, purchases local goods and services, and gives personal opportunities for people. Enviva biomass supports many community events, which help citizens living here in southern Virginia and North Carolina. The majority of VLA's membership is made up of family-owned smaller businesses whose owners depend upon Enviva biomass. whose owners depend upon Enviva biomass and other mills to provide unrefined forest products to make products used by every household. We also, we are also very proud to report that Enviva is one of several mills with membership in VLA. Virginia's forest resources are in great shape because of a strong reforestation policy supported by Virginia government leaders, industry leaders like Enviva, and forest landowners. Currently, because of that, pine is growing at more than two times the rate of harvesting and hardwoods are growing at the rate of more than three times the rate of harvesting. Our forests are natural and renewable resources that provide many of the items we all have in our homes. Wise management of our forests also lead to sustainable forests for future generations and create large environmental benefits. Great companies like Enviva are on a mission to displace coal with a renewable energy resource. They are focused on continuous improvement in all its operations while playing an active role in the community. I would just like to say thank you very much for the opportunity and we do support Title V permit application for Enviva. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Our next speaker will be Dr. Pamela Chamberley, followed by Peter Daniel.
Dr. Chamberley, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Dr. Chamberley, if you would, please, if you dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Peter Daniel, followed by Aaron Carey.
Peter, your line?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you so much and good evening. My name is Peter Daniel Jr. and I represent the North Carolina Chamber. The Chamber is the leading business advocacy organization in North Carolina with over 800 businesses located across our state. On behalf of the NC Chamber and the statewide business community, I'm speaking tonight to express support of Enviva's Title V permit application for its facility in Garysburg, North Carolina. Our support of Enviva stems from the following three points. Enviva has not committed any environmental violations or made changes to its permit application. Enviva successfully applied for and was granted a permit to expand its Garysburg facility in 2019 and the construction was completed in spring of 2021. The facility is currently operating in complete compliance with all environmental regulations and all data collected from the site demonstrates that the Enviva's facility has met the high air quality standards by both federal and state regulations. Second, Enviva's product is an environmentally responsible and sustainable energy source. Enviva is committed to displacing fossil fuels and coal with renewable energy, planting trees, and fighting climate change. They also have a company mission to become carbon neutral and use 100% renewable energy in its operations by 2030. Finally, Enviva's facility helps bolster our state's job growth and helps to challenge rural community. Rural communities were disproportionately affected during the height of the pandemic and 89% of our counties, including North Hampton County, still have unemployment rates below between 5 and 10%. The North Hampton facility, as mentioned earlier, supplies over 90 direct jobs and over 300 indirect jobs, provides a valuable market for forest landowners for their low merchantable timber. And additionally, as a major exporter to the European Union, Enviva provides a steady international export and indirect jobs to our state's port workers. Enviva's facility is an integral partner in the state's rural economy and the NC Chamber appreciates this opportunity hosted by DAQ to express support for this Title V permit application. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Our next speaker will be Aaron Carey, followed by Mary Hillmeyer.
Aaron, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead. Aaron, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead. Make your comments. Thank you. We'll have to come back to Aaron.
Okay, our next speaker will be Mary Hillmeyer, followed by Barry New.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hillamire. I'm a North Carolina resident and I am representing a group of five public health graduate students from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill School of Global Public Health. This spring, we worked with a resident from North Hampton County to collaborate on a community-driven research project examining environmental injustices faced by her community. Through our research, we found that Enviva's operations in Garysburg specifically and North Hampton County in general negatively impact air quality and the health of neighboring community members. I join previous callers in emphasizing that these environmental justice and environmental protection issues require regulatory action. Residents of Garysburg have the right to breathe clean air in their own backyards. We asked DAQ to require Enviva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to mitigate the impact of harmful dust pollution on the surrounding community and incorporate that plan into Enviva's Title V permit. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Hillmeyer. Our next speaker will be Barry New, followed by Patrick Anderson.
Barry, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead and make your comments now. Thank you. Barry, if you would. Your line has been unmuted. You can go ahead and make your comments now. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to come back.
Okay, our next speaker will be Patrick Anderson, followed by Ewell Smith.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Patrick. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Anderson. I'm an attorney with the Environmental Integrity Project. I appreciate the shout-out and the introduction for our involvement with this facility. For about four years now, I've been in close contact with community members who live near Enviva in Garysburg in North Hampton County. But before I get to my main comments, I want to address some talking points I've heard from several Enviva folks about their new pollution controls. We, of course, welcome those new controls. We pushed for them hard. But I have serious doubts that Enviva would have installed them if community groups and groups like my own had not raised the fact that Enviva unlawfully constructed a major source of air pollution without complying with major source PSD requirements and without any public input until they were emitting more than 450 tons of VOCs per year. I also want to correct a statement about Enviva's compliance record I just heard. It's a fact that is easily verifiable that North Carolina has cited Enviva for numerous air permit violations in recent years. So it's just not true that they've never been cited for violations. Anyhow, my main set of comments are this. Since my involvement began in 2017, one issue I've heard all along, and we've heard it tonight and continue to hear unfortunately, are problems with fugitive dust. Fugitive dust is more than a nuisance. It can be a serious health risk, especially to those who are sensitive like the elderly, children, and people with conditions like asthma. Not to mention, as I heard Ms. Belinda Joyner state earlier, the higher risk of serious health impacts death for folks with COVID caused by breathing particulate matter like fugitive dust. Despite this, the Title V permit contains only a vague, general condition that lacks any specific requirements or steps to address the problems the community is experiencing. My colleague Heather Hillaker, who will follow me, will cover more on why a fugitive dust plan is necessary. But tonight, I want to highlight a distinct but related issue. The draft permit lacks any monitoring designed to assure compliance with the existing fugitive dust requirements. Title V permits must include adequate monitoring, record-keeping, and reporting requirements designed to assure the compliance with all applicable requirements. Unfortunately, the permit does not require any such monitoring. So DEQ must revise the permit to include visible emissions monitoring and record-keeping and reporting for fugitive sources so that problems will be detected and fixed. Ideally, this monitoring should be conducted on a daily basis for all fugitive sources at the facility and more importantly, require that prompt action be taken when problems are observed. I close by pointing out that these are relatively easy steps that DEQ can take and that I do believe Enviva can implement that will address the problems the community is experiencing. With my written comments that I submit tomorrow or the next day, they will contain examples of strong fugitive dust requirements and monitoring conditions that other states have implemented when problems have arisen with pellet plants. I hope the DEQ takes that into consideration and revises the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Our next speaker will be Ewell Smith, followed by Erniko Brown.
Just one second. Ewell Smith?
Ewell Smith, yes, sir.
Your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ewell Smith. I'm the Executive Director of the Carolina Loggers Association. We represent about 450 logging members to our association across the entire state. And we're all on this call because of COVID forcing us to do a Zoom call. And as an association, we reached early on in this process with COVID, we began a process for logger relief to help loggers get some relief dollars to come down to help because we saw the impacts it was having on our logging community. And many a times, we've heard how important Enviva is filling in the gaps with the market that they provide. Every market for wood is very, very important to our guys. And Enviva has played a critical role, especially during this period of COVID. And regarding the resource itself, I go back to this state, North Carolina being the birthplace of forestry. We have over 14 billion trees in this state. We have led the entire nation and the wood basket for the world as far as sustainability. So North Carolina has an excellent track record, leading the entire United States for that. In that process, of course, we want to work with our mills and we want our mills to do the right job and we believe Enviva does that. So we support this permit and appreciate the time you've given us this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next speaker will be Erniko Brown, followed by John Hatcher.
Just one second. Erniko Brown, if you have dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can unmute your line. So I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Erniko Brown, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can have, so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to come back.
Okay, our next speaker will be John Hatcher, followed by Andrea Macklin.
John, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Dr. John Hatcher. I'm the Executive Director of the North Carolina Forestry Association, speaking in support of Enviva's Title V permit application. Contrary to testimony offered earlier, Enviva's North Hampton facility has consistently demonstrated compliance with all federal and state air quality standards since its expansion in 2019. Like many of NCFA's members, Enviva is a good corporate citizen that provides good-paying jobs and makes significant investments in their community and other rural parts of North Carolina. Moreover, Enviva is a critical market for landowners in North Carolina and Virginia and their production of pellets not only provides a renewable energy source used across the globe, but it also helps ensure that our forests in North Carolina are sustainable and that our landowners have an incentive to keep their forests working for generations to come. In closing, many of our members have embraced sound forest management since the Biltmore State was funded and George and Edith Vanderbilt started the first forestry school in the eastern U.S. And Enviva continues to educate our landowners. They continue to use best practices and comply with all best management practices. And we thank them for their membership. We thank them for the contributions they make to our state's economy and we very much support their Title V permit application. Thank you for your time and I have submitted my comments that I've offered tonight, earlier this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Our next speaker will be Andrea Macklin, followed by Heather Hillaker.
Andrea, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Andrea? If you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Heather Hillaker, followed by Jenny Lewis.
Heather, please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Just a little bit louder.
All right. Is this any better?
Just a little bit. Please go ahead.
I'll try to be loud. My name is Heather Hillaker and I am an attorney with the Southern Environmental Law Center. We've heard various talking points tonight from Enviva and those that are employed in one way or another by Enviva, some of which Patrick Anderson has already addressed. But I want to focus on what now is most, health impacts to the local community, many of whom appear to be having difficulty participating tonight, an issue that I hope DEQ will be looking into. The initial Title V permit for this facility has been pending since April 2014. And while I'm glad that DEQ is moving forward with issuing this permit as is required under the Clean Air Act, the draft permit's fugitive dust requirements need to be strengthened to incorporate a site-specific dust plan into the permit. As you've already heard from some people tonight, fugitive dust is a primary concern of those living closest to the North Hampton now. In fact, dust complaints are common with pellet mills throughout North Carolina and the rest of the country. Fugitive dust at wood pellet mills comes from several parts of the manufacturing process, including the wood handling, storage piles, conveyor points, yard dust, haul road dust, and engine exhaust. Inhalation of fugitive dust can cause serious health problems, including damage to the lungs and respiratory system. More specifically, irritation to the eyes, nose, and throat, coughing, and difficulty breathing, rhinitis, and asthma. Neighbors and pellet mills have spoken out repeatedly about the negative impacts that dust from these facilities is having on their health and well-being. In fact, during the August 20th, 2019, public hearing for the expansion of this facility, there were at least three individuals who provided oral comments complaining about dust. One gentleman who lives across the street from Enviva said that the dust coats his house and vehicle to the to the point where he has to wash his car every two to three days. Another gentleman who lives within a few miles stated, quote, "I cannot deal with the dust" when discussing his concerns within Enviva's operations. As a result, during the public comment period for that permit, SCLC and the Environmental Integrity Project called on DEQ to require Enviva to implement a fugitive dust control plan at that time. DEQ declined to do so. Now, almost two years later, the community still does not have relief from the dust pollution from its facility. North Carolina's regulations require a fugitive dust plan if there is more than two substantive complaints made within a 12-month period. If the community's comments at this public hearing don't constitute a substantive complaint, then DEQ needs to inform the community of what does. Recently, the South Carolina Department for Health and Environmental Control acknowledged dust concerns from a pellet mill and is proactively requiring a new greenfield facility to come up with a dust plan before it has the opportunity to impact local communities. That facility is only 1/16th the size of the North Hampton facility. DEQ should utilize this opportunity when developing North Hampton's first-time Title V permit to listen to the community and require Enviva to develop and implement the fugitive dust control plan, which is then incorporated into the Title V permit.
Thank you, Ms. Hillaker. Our next speaker will be Jenny Lewis, followed by Loretta Garland.
Hello? Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Lewis. Yes, please go ahead with your comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening to all. I am Jenny Lewis and I am the President of the Runet Valley Chamber of Commerce here in Runet Rapids, located in Runet Rapids. I am speaking on behalf of Enviva. We are in support of the Title V permit application that's being done. We are, as chambers, of course, advocates for our businesses in our areas. And yes, true, Enviva has done a lot to support us, but I feel confident in supporting them in that feeling that if they are doing due diligence and getting the permitting that is requested and being followed up by, I would hope, and that the community would embrace the idea that Enviva is doing everything they can to be community-friendly. We do think Enviva for being a great partner for the chamber. Yes, they have supported us monetary through organizations that we represent, such as our Business Education Partnership, where we work hand-in-hand with our local school systems here in our area. They've been very generous in this area because our students are the ones that are going to be our future employees for the area. So they have supported us in that, as well as fundraising that we do in our area for our local first responders, which is an important part of all of our businesses and for our businesses in the area for the safety of our first responders. We also had Enviva to step up and have volunteered in doing, we did a generosity feeds program here. They are very community-friendly in that they sent volunteers from the Enviva themselves to come out on a Saturday. And to me, that shows that they are very community invested. And we just appreciate all and everything that they do for us. And I was a part of the 2019 permitting and I would just hope that that is given the chance to, if it just came on board and is finished as of March 2021, that we will give it an opportunity to make sure that it is up and running and we'll do our community the best that it can do for that. But again, we do support and we look forward to working with Enviva in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Our next speaker will be Loretta Garland. She's the last speaker on our list and we will cycle back through to those who did not, who were registered and did not respond for one last pass. Loretta Garland is next.
Ms. Garland, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to call you. Ms. Garland, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to call you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, at this point, we've gone through the list for a first pass. We do have several folks that were called that did not respond to unmuting of their line and I will go through that list for those individuals to give them a second opportunity to make their comments. Yes.
And if I may, so if, when we do call your name, it's possible that you have to also unmute your line on your end as well. Just check to see if, once I have unmuted you, to see if you've been unmuted. That'd be great.
Okay, so we'll go back through. So the next speaker that we have up will be Sheil Patel, followed by David Anderson.
Sheil, your line has been unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, sorry for the delay before. My name is Sheil Patel and I'm a youth here from Wilmington, North Carolina. My stance here is against the permit. Enviva's use of loopholes to get around regulations must not be allowed. The health repercussions of the North Hampton pellet mill is dire on the people of North Hampton. For the sake of the people, the environment and the general good, the DEQ needs to monitor the community and not allow Enviva to get around these loopholes. The people here are being discriminated and have no right to experience the health repercussions they are. Many of these people feel unsafe of even being able to go outside because of the dust particles. The hazardous dust released by Enviva's plant is causing cancer and suffering to the people of North Hampton County. In a time of turmoil and as a result of COVID-19, our communities living near these facilities are facing even more health problems. Wood pellets are destructive and mythical as a renewable energy source. They release even more greenhouse gases in comparison to fossil fuels. Wood pellets are not net zero and in fact, they're speeding up climate change. We ask you that you require Enviva to develop and implement a fugitive dust control plan to mitigate the impact that harmful dust pollution is having on the surrounding community and incorporate that into Enviva's Title V permit. North Carolina cannot afford to have any more wood pellet plants. Again, my name is Sheil Patel and this permit cannot be allowed for the sake of the health of the people and our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. We appreciate that. Our next speaker will be David Anderson, followed by Kathy Claiborne.
Mr. David Anderson, if you dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. I will have to come back. I believe, I have not been able to identify Mr. Anderson. We'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Kathy Claiborne, followed by Patrick Suarez.
Kathy, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Is this Kathy? Kathy, I believe I've unmuted your line. I believe she's having technical difficulties. We'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Patrick Suarez, followed by Crystal Cavalier.
Mr. Suarez, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Crystal Cavalier, followed by Reverend Kennedy Barber.
Crystal, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can unmute your line. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Reverend Kennedy Barber, followed by Yana Kratsova.
Reverend Barber, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Yana Kratsova, followed by-
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Yana, go ahead.
Thank you. Apologies for the earlier pickup. Good evening, everyone. My name is Yana Kratsova. I work at Enviva and I lead our environmental and public affairs team. We appreciate the North Carolina DEQ holding the public hearing to hear from the community as the next important step in our permitting process on this facility. As our community may know, our plant has gone through an extensive permitting review and public process, which was completed in summer of 2019 for a construction permit and a production increase with enhanced air emission controls. All the new equipment and the air emission control equipment has been since installed and is now operational. And this is one of the most, if not the most controlled wood pellet plant in North Carolina and the United States. That is millions of dollars that has been invested by the company in the best air emission control technology at this plant. We also completed installation of this air emission control equipment 10 months ahead of the permit deadline, despite the COVID-19 pandemic and the slowdown of global economy. That air emission control equipment has significantly decreased the emission profile of the plant. The reduced air emission profile demonstrates that the plant is well below the required EPA standards that may present any risk to public health. That means the facility doesn't present any public health issues and will continue to operate in compliance and exceeding environmental standards set by the Clean Air Act, National Ambient Air Quality Standards and North Carolina State Regulation. To further demonstrate and answer any community concerns that were raised in summer of 2019, North Carolina DEQ installed an air monitoring station at the North Hampton County High School in July of 2019, which is in the radius of 1.5 miles from our plant and measures air quality in the area, including the vicinity of our plant for fine particulate matter known as PM 2.5 and NOx. All air quality data collected from North Hampton Monitor, including PM 2.5 emissions level that were mentioned earlier, has been below the National Ambient Air Quality Standard, presenting no risk to public health or community. In fact, the air quality in North Hampton County is equal or better to that in Raleigh or Washington DC where we are headquartered. The new permit draft makes no operational or other material changes to the plant. It's an operating permit which will allow us to operate the equipment and emission controls already installed. It also requires us to test the plant's air emissions at least on an annual basis with an expert third party and publicly disclose those test results for approval by North Carolina DEQ. This plant has no history of environmental law violations, has been operating in compliance with its permit and just had an onsite inspection for records and inspection by North Carolina DEQ at the plant conducted in April of this year that found no deficiencies, which report will be made available publicly by North Carolina DEQ. We wanted to thank the community for participating in this permitting hearing and we look forward to completing this process in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kratsova. Our next speaker will be Dr. Pamela Chambly, followed by Erin Carey.
Dr. Chambly, if you have dialed in by phone, please press star three so I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. Dr. Pamela? Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, our next speaker will be Erin Carey, followed by Barry New.
Erin, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead. Erin, you may have to check your, you've been unmuted, so please check on your end to see if your line has been. Okay, we'll have to move on.
Okay, the next speaker we have is Barry New, followed by Erniko Brown.
Barry, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead. Okay, we'll have to, let me see if I can reach out to Barry, this number. Just give me one second. Let me see if I can reach out to Barry, this number, just give me one second. Okay, we'll have to, we're still trying to connect with Barry. Maybe we can move on.
Okay, the next speaker is Erniko Brown, followed by Andrea Macklin.
Erniko, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having this meeting. My name is Erniko Brown and I just wanted to speak to not, speak to being against this plant. And the reason being, most of the time, these plants are located in EJ communities where it's mostly 25% or more BIPOC, Black Indigenous, and people of color populations. In these communities, people are already dealing with the impacts of their daily lives, whether it be work, trying to feed their families, trying to feed their kids, making sure that they have the things that they need in their lives. In North Hampton County, what's going on, what we're seeing is basically being a dumping ground for everything. And that's not fair to the people in the community that live there. I spoke with someone and, you know, they talked about not being able to sit out on their porch and enjoy their daily lives because of what is going on with these facilities. These facilities have air pollutants which make, make it hard for individuals to breathe, to live, to do the things that they need to do. And with the onset of these facilities coming in the southeast, it's harder for people to breathe, for people to live, for people to have the everyday life that they're used to. I'm against this because I live in the community where an Enviva plant is and it is the very same thing here. People need to know the detriment and the harm that these plants cause. People need to know that they're not needed in their communities. And a lot of times when individuals hear about expansions on behalf of the Enviva plants, they think that it's a good thing. The miscommunication in all of this is the language that is used and how they're brought into these communities. I think that most people need to know that they're doing more harm than good and they're not producing things that create a longevity of life. If you're cutting down the trees, then you're cutting our air source. If you're cutting our air source, it makes it harder for us to breathe and live in the communities that we live in. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, for your comments. Our next speaker will be Andrea Macklin, followed by Loretta Garland.
Okay. Andrea, if you've called then, dialed in by phone, please press star three. So I can identify your line to unmute you. Andrea, if you've dialed in by phone, please press star three. So I can identify your line to unmute you. Thank you. We'll have to move on.
Okay, Loretta Garland is next.
Yes. One second. I'm trying to identify her line. Just give me one second. Okay. While we wait to connect with her, we can maybe move on to Barry, Mr. Barry New. Mr. Barry, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
I am trying.
We can hear you. Please go ahead.
Oh, you can. Okay, finally. Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Barry New and I'm providing comments on behalf of the North Carolina Forest Service. We feel it's important to offer a few highlights about North Carolina's forests and the industry that utilize our forest resources once these topics have come up in past DAQ public hearings. For the record, the North Carolina Forest Service is not endorsing nor opposing the Enviva permit. The area of forest land in North Carolina is stable, covering about 18.8 million acres. There's 61% of the state's land area and is the dominant land use in North Carolina. Our forests are diverse and are important for the many social, economic, and environmental service benefits that they provide. 64% of our forest land is dominated by hardwoods with 36% in softwood forest types. 84% are of natural origin and about 3 million acres of plantation forests occur. By volume, most of the timber harvested in North Carolina is processed at sawmills, 41%, followed by pulp and paper mills at 34%. And about 13% goes into a category called biointerse and fuel wood processing. That's the category that would include wood pellets, among some others. 83% of North Carolina's forest lands are in private ownership and most of these, about 10 and a half million acres, are owned by families and individuals. Within Enviva's supply area for the North Hampton County Mill, assumed to be a 75-mile radius, there are significantly more trees growing than are being harvested. And this is also the case throughout North Carolina. Within this area, there are about 6.7 million acres of timberland in Virginia and North Carolina. Within the North Carolina portion, which is about 3 million acres, timber volume and live trees is about 7.7 billion cubic feet and it has been increasing at an annual rate of 2.6% over the past five years. And the growth timber removal ratio is 1.59, meaning the impact growth exceeds annual removal by 59%. And I apologize for the dog and I thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Mr. New. The last speaker we had was Loretta Garland. Did we, were we able to?
I'm still trying to establish connection, but I do have Erin
Carey.
Carey on the line. So Erin, your line has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your persistence with these technical issues. And thank you all for having this hearing this evening and giving people the opportunity to comment. My name is Erin Carey and I'm here to represent the North Carolina Sierra Club and the over 110,000 of our members and supporters who care about air quality, environmental justice, and the preservation of our forests. The North Carolina Sierra Club has taken up strong opposition to the wood pellet industry's aggressive and widespread destruction of our state's forests and its casual disregard for the health and wellness of neighboring communities as well as the environment. And that said, and understanding that this facility is currently operational, at this time, a chapter would implore DAQ to adopt more stringent environmental requirements for Enviva, particularly with regard to dust control. Fugitive dust from processing wood pellets frequently travels to nearby communities, covering people's homes and cars. It prevents people from safely opening windows in their houses or even going outside without a face covering for fear of inhaling dust particles. It's well documented that dust, a form of particulate matter, can cause respiratory health issues like asthma. If the state is going to allow these facilities to operate near our communities, the only thing we can do is make sure the industry is held to the strictest standard of air quality for the health of North Carolinians and the environment. Please develop and incorporate a fugitive dust management plan into this Title V permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. That's all of the names that I have for those who've pre-registered to speak. During the hearing, we did reach out and emailed all of the speakers that did not respond when they were called on to offer additional, and they were offered additional assistance, including having WebEx call them with no response. So at this time, we've attempted to call on all registered participants multiple times and with no success. So we're going to move on. Those are all the speakers that have participated. Keep in mind that if you still want to provide comments on the issuance of the air quality permit to Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC, there are several other ways to provide comments until the end of the comment period on May 26, 2021. You can call 919-707-8714 and leave a voicemail message with your first and last name, whom you are representing, and state your comments on the proposed permit. Or you can provide written comments until the comment period ends on May 26, 2021 at 5:00 PM. To provide a written comment, please email them to DAQpubliccomments@ncdnr.gov with Enviva-NOR, period 14B, as in boy, in the subject line. So again, that's Enviva, E-N-V-I-V-A-N-O-R, period 14B, in the subject line. You can mail written comments to the address listed in the public notice or you can fax written comments to 919-715-0717 and please address it to Mr. Richard Simpson. I would like to thank everyone for your attendance this evening and for your interest in this public hearing process. Based on the information received during tonight's virtual public hearing and comments received throughout the comment period, I will make a recommendation to the Director of the Division of Air Quality for his consideration in making a final decision on whether to issue, modify, or deny the permit to Enviva Pellets North Hampton LLC. Again, I thank you for your cooperation, attendance on this virtual public hearing, and interest in the air quality permitting process. This public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.